Good afternoon, everyone. Hold on one second, please. All right, let's try again. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment. There might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes per public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we will be discussing are public employee appointment and conference with legal counsel. Staff, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much, everyone. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you.
We're letting everyone know that we're going to be extending our closed session until 6:35. Again, we will extend our closed session until 6:35. We will see you then. Take care and have a great evening.
We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to staff, they are placed in the order when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move on to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, if you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to our land acknowledgement. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, if you would read that, please.
Absolutely. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yumhuakma Karkana Loney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. We're now moving to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary trafficked force and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. I will now go to agenda item B4, the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racist Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to work to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of West Contra Costa Unified School District education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious bias and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to hold each board member accountable towards these goals in moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools. We are now moving to agenda item B5, roll call. Dr. Hurst, will you do roll call, please?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Abdou Gueparov, absent. Trustee Palkar, also absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now moving to agenda item B6, report ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, is there anything to report out?
Yes, ma'am. Regarding item A2.1, the board voted to approve the appointment of Karen Zapata as principal of Washington Elementary School by a vote of as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. President Phillips, absent at that time. Also, the board voted to approve the appointment of Claudia Velez as principal of Stige Elementary School by the following vote. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent at that time. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We're now moving to agenda item B7, West Contra Costa Unified School District Public Comment. How to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form or participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself. Alon Harrison, please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Maisha Harris-Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Evening. So first, I wanted to say to trustee Smith Folds, thank you for the affirming event that you hosted. This has been a very challenging school year and for me personally, one of the most unaffirming years of my professional career. So I thank you very much. And then I'm going to pivot to my kid. Today, we were reflecting, and I have a lot of students who will be rising seniors. And so we were talking about, oh, yeah, when you guys were like in the seventh grade, it got cut off in March, and then you spent your whole eighth grade year online, and then you came to high school, and we were like having to wear masks. So the kids were just like, remember, Ms. Gash, how you had your class and the desk had to be all forward? And you were like, we're going to wipe down with Lysol, and you had to wear a mask, and we didn't have a mask. We were like... So we're just like reminiscing, reflecting, and laughing. And so it just fills my heart with joy because I have seen my rising seniors like from their freshman year, and now they're getting ready to enter this like final phase of K through 12. So it was just like a good feeling because I've seen their baby faces mature into, you know, a little bit more mature faces. Some of the young men have now beards and mustaches, and the young ladies are, you know, just owning their femininity. So this is a really great day to reflect and to reminisce with my young people and my soul and my spirit needed that today. So once again, thank you, trustee Smith Folds. Thank you, board, just in general. I know each of you have a very challenging and hard task in the positions that you were in, and a lot of times you were not affirmed. But what I do believe is if you don't walk in somebody's footsteps, be careful and cautious about the things that you say and share if you have not been in that position. So everybody have a wonderfully blessed night, and let's end this school year on a high note. Good night.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chambers. I am TTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. We have had a really wonderful year in SSA. We were able to award two scholarships tomorrow night, actually, to two of our outstanding students in our district. We are very proud that these students have continued their education, and one is at UC Berkeley and one is at Diablo Valley College. So we are very proud that we are able to contribute to their well-being and continued education. Speaking of education, I would like the board and all of cabinet to start considering what we can do to help with the education and training of our staff for the following year, making sure that they have the tools to continue to do their jobs in the most effective manner. That is my goal for this next year is to make sure that we all, as labor leaders, as district employees, as cabinet members, as board trustees, look towards making sure that our staff members are given the tools to really communicate and utilize the best of their abilities to serve our students. Thank you and have a good night.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, good afternoon. Good evening. I'm sorry, it's nighttime. Good evening, board. I just want to say it's been a rocky year wrapping it up, and I'll be here for another one. And I know y'all miss me in person, but I'll be back. And I would like to also thank all the people who supported our work that we've done and the board that supported our work. And I look forward to us getting more work done and improving our reading scores and working our superintendent strategic plan for our children that we want to see different things going on at our school sites with safety and the climate issues that's been happening. And yeah, so I'm complete. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Jesus Galindo.
President Smith Folds, Superintendent Dr. Hurst, distinguished board members, so good to see you. The sole purpose of my comments are to share gratitude. This is my last year with WCCUSD, nine years here. I just wanted to say thank you. I recently had the privilege of being elected as the CEO for Aim High, a summer enrichment program based in San Francisco that also has the privilege of operating here in WCCUSD. Organization's been around for 39 years, and I have the privilege of doing that beautiful work for that amazing organization. But I want to talk about this organization, an organization that means a lot to me. When I think about how to sum up my time here, I think about Proverbs 27:17. As iron sharpens iron, so does one person sharpen another. During my nine years at Lincoln, a school that some of my colleagues, when I was choosing where to work, told me, don't work there. It's going to be too tough. What you're trying to accomplish is impossible. And in those nine years with my amazing colleagues, we showed what can happen when like-minded people who are passionate about expanding the spheres of freedom and justice for kids, we see what can happen. We can see that a school like Lincoln can have one of the highest growth rates in terms of math. We can see that a school that had 50% attrition with staff can have 100% of teachers coming back year to year and the huge impact that has on the educational outcomes of kiddos. But more importantly, I want to thank all of you because you invested in me. You helped me grow, and I'm a better person because of it, and I'm able to better serve my community. With immense honor, it would just be an immense pleasure to be a part of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving on to Agenda Review and Adoption, B8. Board, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted. We're now moving to B9, Approval of the Minutes, April 24th, 2024. Are there any changes? Seeing none, the minutes are now adopted. We are now moving to C, Consent Items. Board, is there any changes to the consent calendar? Go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull C3, approve the application for exemption for the required expenditure for classroom teacher salaries for 2223 until after we listen to Fitmat. Thank you.
What you're asking is to move it to after Fitmat?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other changes to the consent calendar? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. We are now moving to item D, the superintendent communication. Go ahead, sir.
Can we put up the presentation, please?
I can't see that. Mr. Hazus, hold on a minute. We want to all come down and shake your hand. It's rare for us to hear something nice, Rand. So hold on. We want to shake your hand and take a picture. Let's go. All right. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us. Dr. Hurst, we are now ready for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, ma'am. Next slide. We would like to start with in memoriam. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of school communities who have passed away. I regret to inform you that Patsy Carson recently passed away. Over 20 years in the district, Patsy worked at Kennedy High School or Motson Middle School and El Cerrito High School. Patsy's three children went to the schools in the district. Not only was she a strong advocate for students and educators, she developed long relationships with her teachers and her colleagues. Her 20-plus years shows her commitment and her passion, and she was very outspoken when it comes to the needs of the classroom. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her family and friends during this challenging time. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We go to our next slide. We wanted to remind everyone of our upcoming graduations. Can we go to our next slide as well? So again, we won't read every graduation coming up, but we want to inform the board and the community that our next graduation will be this Friday, Pinot Valley High School, at Pinot Valley High School, starting at 6:00 PM. Also, on Saturday, June 1st, we have Vista Virtual at 11:00 AM. It's going to be at Pinot Valley Theater. And then also Gateway College. It's going to be at Contra Costa College at the Knox Theater, and that's going to be at 3:00 PM. May we go to our next slide? So we have a lot of recognitions, celebrations that's happening across the district. I was able to attend some of the Special Olympics Field Day. Not this particular event, but we wanted to highlight this event. This is the Special Education Transition Picnic, Unified Special Olympics Field Day. The transition program hosted their annual picnic, Unified Special Olympics Field Day. That was Thursday, May 23rd. You can see in the picture some of the students, Vista High students, joining festivities. Included pickleball, bowling, cornhole, and a lot more. They had a lot of fun. So we wanted to acknowledge that and celebrate that as well. Can we go to our next slide? Also for special education, Special Olympics Track and Field at Pinot Valley High School, I did have the opportunity to attend this phenomenal event and see all of our students, K through 12, just having fun and participating in activities. And you can see here at the bottom, across 447 schools in Northern California, approximately 10,828 special ed students and 57,301 general ed students participate in this program. So it was a lot of fun. We wanted to share this with you and celebrate. Can we go to our next slide? And then we just wanted to acknowledge and celebrate the African-American Students of Honor Ceremony. If you participated, you saw that it was standing room only. It was packed, but it was organized, and we celebrate our students' achievement. We had more than 500 black students, and it was for those students who earned a 3.3 or higher across our schools, from kinder through 12th grade. Our Darius and Sanji Bell, if you're listening, great job, phenomenal job organizing this event. So let's give them a round of applause if they're listening. Outstanding job. And our next slide. Again, we wanted to acknowledge Sanji Bell and also Adarius McDonald, who put on an amazing black graduation and a kente cloth ceremony. And we had our black graduates there from all of our schools. You can see some of the acceptances as well, included UC Santa Barbara, Dillard University, Howard University, and many more universities and colleges. More than anything, we wanted to take the opportunity just to acknowledge these leaders in our district for just putting on an amazing celebration for our black students' graduation. Thank you again. Next slide. And then I also had the opportunity to attend this event, and we had three of our board members attend. We had our president there, Smith Folds, and our clerk Gonzalez-Hoy and trustee Reckler. It was a great event at Pinot Valley in their quad area. So a beautiful venue. Many of our students, one of the things that we wanted to highlight is we keep reclassifying more and more students every year, and we surpassed our reclassification last year. It was 629. We're surpassing that. We're over 800 students that were reclassifying. And we wanted to just call out a couple of names here as well. Isau Orozco and Mary Ann LaFoss. Thank you so much for your leadership in getting our students across the finish line and working with all of our schools. Give them a round of applause as well. Next slide. Before I close off and return it back over to you, Madam President, I was given some information. I didn't have an opportunity to put it in the presentation, but I wanted to just take a moment and call out two principals. One is Principal Finney Prack. We probably all know and are aware that she is a principal at middle college. Not sure if we all know that she, her school was awarded the National Blue Ribbon School Award, which is a prestigious award, which is the top 15% of the schools in the state, especially looking at English Language Arts and Mathematics. And she was celebrated in Anaheim at a special ceremony that was just for those schools across the state that were national blue ribbon schools. So congratulations to Principal Prack. If we can give her a round of applause, appreciate it. And then we wanted to also call out West County Mandarin School. We're excited to share that West County Mandarin made the Educational Results Partnership Honor Roll List of California's top-performing schools. And almost like National Blue Ribbon Schools, this represents the top 17% of schools in the state of California, so also a prestigious award. So we wanted to call out Principal of West County Mandarin as well, and that's Principal Peterson. And he also had a letter from Senator Skinner. I wanted to just take the opportunity to just share briefly this letter. Senator Skinner writes to... Senator Skinner writes to Dr. Peterson, "I'm writing to congratulate your school on receiving the prestigious Honor Roll Distinction presented by Educational Results Partnership. As your state senator, I want to expressly share my profound gratitude for your dedication and service to our region and state. Your commitment to fostering an environment of academic excellence is a testament to the hard work and dedication of your entire community, including administrators, teachers, students, and parents. And on behalf of the California United States Senate District, I extend my heartfelt congratulations and best wishes. Your remarkable achievement not only brings pride to our district, but also sets a shining example for other schools to follow. Thank you for your unravering commitment to educational excellence and for making a significant impact on the lives of our students." Thank you so much, Dr. Peterson. Thank you so much, Principal Prack. Give them both a round of applause one more time. And Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board. Are there any questions with superintendent report? I see trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for sharing all this positive information with the board and the public.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you very much. We are now on agenda item E1. Approve the third interim for the 2023-2024 school year. Dr. Moses, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, President Smith Folds, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, Superintendent Hurst, and esteemed board members. Today, we're coming before you to ask for approval of the 2324 Third Interim Report. As required by state law, the Board of Trustees each year must certify as to the financial condition of our district by reviewing two interim reports. Because the second interim report for West Concha Costa included a budget self-certification of qualified, we are required to submit a third interim report. This third interim report includes the actual revenue and expenditure information from the period of July 1, 2023, through August 30, 2024. We are also required to revise the budget for the remainder of the year and the subsequent two future years for your information. This evening, we're recommending that you listen and receive and accept the third interim report. First slide. Before we begin with this initial slide, I'd like to just thank Jeff Carter, our Director of Business Services, who is here to present this report to you this evening. We'd also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our business services team. Every member of the Business Services Department has a hand in contributing to this report. And we appreciate everyone for their thoroughness and thoughtfulness in supporting this process. We'd also like to extend a special thanks to our fiscal expert, Javeta Cleveland, for her input, and also for our partnering consultant, Shannon Norris, for her input as well. This third interim is going to share the report ending April 30, 2024. We'll review the information from the California Department of Information and update you on any changes that may have occurred. We're also going to share adjustments to the multi-year projections, and those adjustments are informed by the expenditures and budget assumptions provided in this report. This ends the cycle of our fiscal year as we prepare to present to you next month our new proposal for adopted budget. Next slide. This process consists of comparing our revenue and expenditures from the second to the third interim. So what you'll be seeing are our projections based upon what has been analyzed from that period to this upcoming, to this current period of third interim. Jeff is going to review all financial resources and departmental budgets to ensure that you understand our ability to meet our financial obligations through June 30, 2024. He's going to examine adjusted expenses and annual revenues. And we will also discuss the 2324 budget and multi-year projections that have been amended to match our expected need. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Carter, our Director of Business Services, to complete this presentation.
Thank you, Kim. Hello, everyone. Good evening. If we can go to the next slide, thank you. First, I'd like to update you on the data from the third interim report. This is the, I want to highlight some of the changes that have happened since second interim. There's been a decrease to revenue in the combined general fund by about $8.4 million. This is due to a decrease in expenditures in restricted resources. There's been an increase in general fund expenditures on the unrestricted budget by about $3.2 million due to a need to move some salaries from restricted to unrestricted funding. And revenue has received, revenue received from interest has come in higher than projected by about $1.5 million. If we could do the next slide. We wanted to revisit our enrollment trends. As we know, enrollment impacts our budget. We are projecting to continue to decline enrollment over the next few years, which will reduce our revenues in future years. But I'll also show you on the next slide that our ADA has increased since second interim as well, so it balances out. Next slide. So these are, we've compared revenue expectations from second interim to third interim, and you'll see on the slide that the increase to ADA, as well as a slight increase to total LCFF revenue by about $59,553. The change in ADA is just about 60 cents second interim. And that'll help us in future years for revenue. Next slide. Here, we're showing you the revenue changes for unrestricted and combined general fund. As stated previously, you'll see the $59,000 increase to LCFF, as well as the $1.5 million increase to other local fund, other local revenue on unrestricted general fund, as well as the 8 million, 8.4 million net decrease to the combined general fund revenues. The 11 million reduction in third interim federal revenues is due to reduced expenditures by about $52.9 million that we do not plan to spend in '23, '24, and which will be reflected on the NYPD to be spent in future years. Next slide. With these changes to third interim, there are also updates to our multi-year projection. Looking forward, we, in '24, '25, we expect an increase to revenue due to a small increase in COLA to 1.07% from 0.76% that was announced that the governors may revision, as well as improved funded ADA three-year average from our annual reporting figures. We do expect an increase to the special education contribution needed since we were able to use one-time expiring restricted funds for a portion of their contracts this year that will increase the expected contribution in the following years. In '25, '26, there is also an increase to COLA to 2.93%, which helps our future revenues out as well. And these changes to the NYPD result in a reduced expected contribution needed from Fund 17 in years two and three by about $12 million. Next slide. Here, we're showing some of the planning factors that go into the NYPD. This includes the updated COLA amounts and the CalPERS, STIRS, and unemployment insurance rates. Please note that CalPERS is increasing over the next two years, but we don't expect an increase in CalSTIRS or unemployment in '24, '25, or '25, '26. Next slide. On this slide, we show the combined general fund multi-year summary. You'll see we're still projected to be operating at a deficit where we have more expenditures than revenues, causing the need for fiscal solvency reductions and Fund 17 contributions to make up that difference. Next slide. So that one's off-centered. Here, we show the unrestricted third interim NYPD. We've added a column for second interim, 2324 NYPD, to show the difference between 2324 third interim and a side-by-side comparison for second interim and third interim, as well as projected figures for '24, '25, and '25, '26. I want to point out that the current figures only work by including '24, '25, and '25, '26 fiscal solvency reductions of 17.3 million and 7 million in future years, as well as Fund 17 special reserves transfers of 11.5 and $12.9 million due to the operating deficit. Although our reserve, although our revenues are projected to continue to decrease, they are higher than they were in second interim, which is good news and means we're projected to have funds remaining in Fund 17 with our current plan to reach a balanced budget in year three. Next slide. And then, so to summarize the current NYPD, in '23, '24, we'll meet the 3% required reserve. In '24, '25, we'll meet the reserve only with a fiscal solvency plan reduction of 17.3 million and 11.5 million contribution from Fund 17. And in '25, '26, we'll meet the 3% reserve in general fund with a fiscal solvency plan of 7 million and a contribution of 12.9 million from Fund 17. Next slide. And with that, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight and pass it back to Kim if she has any further comments.
Thank you, Jeff. We apologize for that slide that seemed to be off-centered, but Ms. Cornejo, I sent you the actual presentation. If you'd like to show slide 13, then we can have full transparency with the slide that was missed due to the misalignment. Thank you. And once we have that slide up, we'll just have Jeff to review the information on that slide, and then we can move forward to questions.
And President Smith Folds, the presentation on the agenda is correct. You can see this slide if people would like to access it there.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. So if we could just share that on the presentation, and Jeff, if you just review that one slide so that we can have the visual with the information. Thank you.
Yep, there we go. So this is the third interim multi-year projection of unrestricted funds. You'll see that second column, which is 2324 second interim. That's from January, and then the tonight, or the third interim, 2324, is the comparison, so you can see them side-by-side, any changes. And then '24, '25, and '25, '26 are in the last two columns. This is where I wanted to point out that we're only reaching a balanced budget in the, in the, in the bottom row there for zero by doing the '24, '25, and '25, '26 fiscal solvency reductions of 17 million and 7 million, as well as the contributions from Fund 17 of 11.5 and 12.9 million.
Thank you with that. Thank you, Jeff, for that. And with that, we can move on to President Smith Folds.
Thank you so very much for the presentation. Staff, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you, Board. We're going to move to three questions. Anyone have questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So for those who, for the general public who may not be finance monks, would you be able to summarize quickly, just in a couple of sentences, where you are to your budget, both for revenues and expenditures, just really quick?
Sorry, can you repeat the, where we are with budgeting and revenues?
Both your revenues and your expenditures. So if I were just to ask you, okay, like, where are you right now? Are you above where you expected on revenues? Are you below where you expected on revenues to your, to the budget?
Okay. In, in unrestricted, restricted, or combined, it would be different. It depends. We are, we are higher than expected based on the adopted budget in most fields. In unrestricted, for expenditures, we are much higher in expected interest revenue than we were at the beginning of the year as well. We, you know, we projected about two, two and a half million in interest revenue. We've gotten about 20 so far for the combined interest overall. So it depends on which categories we're talking about, but we're, we're over expectations for expenditures and we're over expectations for certain revenue.
Okay, thank you. And then on page seven, on this federal revenue, where you're, you know, under by 11 million, would you be able to explain that? What are the reasons that you're not spending?
Yep. Reasons we're not spending are probably complicated to get into with, with each individual resource. It would depend. Sometimes we get a full amount on a grant award notice, and we, and we have a plan from the sites and the departments, and we budget the full amount. Once we get to April, we've got, we're past the purchasing deadline for the year. And so we, we have a better idea of what we're projected to spend in the last two months of the year. Whereas at first interim or second interim, we're still budgeting the full plan or implementing the full plan. And if, if expenditures don't come in at what we expected, the revenues would go down in relation to the expenditures because a lot of the federal grants are unearned revenue, which, which means if we don't spend it, they don't reimburse us. They have multi-years to spend, and so that's why we put it in the multi-year projection in future years to spend, and then we'll get reimbursed on the revenue later. But why we're not hitting, you know, expected expenditures depends on the resource, I would say.
And if I could just add to that from the program side, thank you, Jeff. Jeff was alluding to the fact that many of our grants are multi-year, and even though we plan to spend them on the out years, they're included in the budget. So what you see in that $11 million change from second to third interim is money that's either been backed out of the budget because it's going to be used by the program in the future year, or the program director made changes to their current year expenditures and are deferring it to a future year as well. So it isn't that the money isn't being spent and won't be spent, it's that there are changes to the budget or the multi-year plan causes that we save that revenue for an out year.
Okay, so definitively, it's all being booked but expensed in future years? Is that, is that accurate for that $11 million?
In this case, I would say yes. It's a little tricky because we do have some expiring funds. Jeff, can you turn off? Thank you. We do have some expiring funds that we expect departments to spend prior to their expectation. They may be folded into there. As Jeff was alluding to, there are some grants that if we don't spend it, the state would like for us to return it. We try very hard not to return any money, but I can't tell you today about departments, whether the departments will fully expend prior to expiration, but that's always our goal.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, in your out years, what do you have baked in there of the governor's budget? And, you know, recent happenings just over the last couple of days in terms of Prop 98 guarantee?
I think I can start with that answer. In terms of the adjustments to the governor's budget, what we're doing right now is matching what we know to be true in this moment to what we're preparing to present for you next month. We do understand that we're in a position where the governor's budget has been very, I'd say they're prioritizing education. The decreases are not as great as what we feared, and we also, because of increased revenue, I'm sorry, because of increased ADA, our revenue picture has improved, even though the government, governor's budget is somewhat uncertain for those decreases that are expected. Our budget that we'll present to you next month will reflect the changes. But at this point, it's difficult to give you a definitive answer. We were already in a situation where we needed to be extremely frugal due to our deficit spending. We're still moving forward with that as our focus, even with the changes in the governor's budget. I don't know if Jeff has something to add to that? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, Board, is there a motion?
President, I moved that we accept the third interim report.
Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to comments. Board, are there any comments? Staff, may we have one minute on the clock, please? I'm sorry. Three questions, two-minute comments. May we have two minutes on the clock? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So I would like to receive, if possible, that $11 million, and I'm talking broad categories. I do not want the line items on this. But how much is being pushed, you know, how much is sitting for future years? How much is being held back this year? Just really broad categories. I do not want line item information and just big dollar amounts, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you, Dr. Moses. Really appreciate it. We are now moving to action item E-two, resolution number two-three-two-four dash seventy-seven.
President Smith Folds, we got a vote.
Got a vote. Sorry. Let's move to the vote. We're just moving right along there. Okay, here we go. Trustee Phillips, your votes are.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Once again, staff. Now we're moving to E-two, resolution number two-three-two-four dash seventy-seven. Intention to continue to levy the assessment for FY twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five preliminarily approved engineers' report and providing notice of public hearing. Mr. Freeze, this is your item, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash seven-seven. Intention to continue to levy the assessment for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and preliminary approving the engineers' report, engineers' report and providing notice of the public hearing. This resolution will set the date in place for the public hearing, calls for the notice for the public hearing to be published ten days prior or more ahead of the meeting. The preliminary acceptance of the engineering, engineering report, the engineers' report contains the proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five and the maintenance and recreation assessment district. We're asking the board tonight to approve this resolution and set the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments, staff?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So in this MRAD, there's a calculation of available use. Would you be able to describe how that calculation, how you come up with that number?
Now, we do have the engineers on the meeting tonight, so we, if we could advance John Bliss and Melanie.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us tonight. If you could address Trustee Reckler's question.
Good evening, members of the school board, staff and, and members of the public. Commission, our board member, Reckler, my name is John Bliss. I'm president of SCI Consulting and we're a, we've been engaged by the district for many years to help you through the annual process of the ongoing MRAD assessment. Let me give you a little background and then I'll be, I'll be brief in my comments and kind of explain that formula a little bit. The, the purpose of the MRAD is to assess the public for their use of your facilities in non-school hours, in the afternoon to use a sports field and the public had years ago approved this assessment and it's assessed each year. Due to some interest from, from some members of the public as well as working closely with staff, we understood that the use of the facilities had evolved over time largely because of COVID and security concerns. So this particular year, we were asked to, hey, let's take a look at it and see what that access, that accessibility really is. The burden that the, the district has in, in making a legally defensible engineers' report is that the district pays its fair share of the use. And just in general terms, and I see my colleague Melanie Lee is on and Melanie may be able to jump in and help me here, but, but generally speaking, if the school district is using the facilities seventy-five percent of the time and they're open to the public twenty-five percent of the time, then the maintenance ought to be seventy-five percent or more paid by the school district and only twenty-five percent of the assessment. I'm going to ask my, my colleague Melanie to unmute and then give those precise numbers and then I'll talk about the accessibility formula. Melanie?
Okay, so just to give a little bit of background, the original calculation for general benefit and special benefit, general meaning during public, during educational hours, it was thirty-three percent for the district to fund those, those amounts. And sixty-seven percent would come from the MRAD. However, throughout the years, the district has always contributed about sixty percent or over sixty percent for their general benefit contribution. So over and above. Then fast forward thirty years, as John said, we have this where school sites definitely don't look like they used to, in particular with the installation of gates and there's been some reduced availability for the public. And what we did was we took a look at specifically John and with the property owner and also with district staff, we looked at how those changes might have affected access to the public. So before, where the district was only providing or asked to provide thirty-three percent of the general benefit contribution, now they're being asked to contribute over sixty percent, which is kind of in line with they've already been producing before. So the, the formula is take into account those considerations that we made based on feedback.
So, so essentially the bottom line is the, and help me out, Melanie, what percentage of the time, what percent of the overall time is for the public and what percent is the school district? What are those numbers?
So we have sixty percent for the school district and forty percent for public.
And how much of the maintenance costs, what percentage of the maintenance cost is the school district paying?
They pay about sixty-six percent.
Okay, so you exceed your responsibility. So number one is, are you paying your fair share or more? And the answer is yes. And that's the most important legal question. So the question, and I apologize, but I wanted to give that background. The question is, how did we, how did we calculate the accessibility of forty percent for the public? And, and to give you a little more on the challenges, we, one, one would think, well, you go school by school and look at the accessibility for that school. And, but that is dynamic because it, it depends on the requests. It depends on the staffing levels. It depends on the security. All of these things are dynamic and, and the job of an assessment engineer is to take something that is dynamic and qualitative in nature and assign a number. And we did that based on a three components, three component analysis. And we looked at, we said, there's three buckets. Some of the sites, some of the, the facilities are available a lot, some are limited and some almost none. So we said, though, we put those in three and then we assigned a percentage for each of those components. And then we multiplied those and added those together to, in the forty percent. We often, you probably hear some hesitation in my voice because there's often an expectation that the number is precise down to the minute or something like that. And that's just not accurate realistically because it, that the accessibility is dynamic. It's based on, as I said, staffing, security, the individual requests, all of that. We feel our calculation is accurate. It may not be as precise as some people like, but that, that over-precision does not really add to the defensibility. So that was the background we wanted to share with you and that's how we came up with that forty percent.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question is, hold on just for one second. So you are defining schools by readily accessible, limited availability or rarely accessible. What is the criteria for those particular definitions? And is there a list that a member of the public could find that listed schools that were readily accessible, accessible?
So the, the definition is, is kind of embedded right in, in, in the titles that we use. The readily accessible, kind of the, the common sense definition of that is they're, they're accessible many afternoons, weekends and the summer. The, the limited accessibility is, is, is by permit and, and special arrangement. They're rarely accessible. We didn't want to say never accessible because our understanding, working with staff and understanding, we worked with staff and we know your facilities well over the year. We, we, we're not aware of anything that under certain circumstances would be available. So it's kind of a common sense definition. There's, as I kind of tried to convey, and I'll, I'll, I'll try to do a better job. There isn't, there isn't a one-to-one correspondence list. We're happy to kind of develop something like that, but it's a dynamic situation and it, and it's, it's, it's affected by a number of factors. And so Melanie, if there's anything you can add to be more clear or members of the staff to, to kind of, to help understand or help better communicate the, the, the field situation.
Yeah, I just want to also state the one that we have as rarely accessible, it's not that we're saying that it's never accessible. We're just saying that there are some facilities that maybe don't have the same usage or accessibility as others. And so John put that in there to be actually be more conservative. Then, you know, it would actually have decreased the amount of general benefit contribution from the district if we didn't have that component in there.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
President, I move that we approve resolution number two-three-two-four dash seven-seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Board, are there comments? Let's put two minutes on the clock, please. Trustee Reckler, when you see the clock, go ahead.
Thank you. My comment is very brief. I do think that if it is possible that a list of schools that are readily accessible should be published and available to the general public. Thank you, if possible.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, you have comment? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, President. Thank you, Mr. Freeze and our consultants for all your work on this. I appreciate the changes to the report. I did want to point out, you know, we've gotten a lot of questions about accessibility of our schools. I've been checking a few of the schools in my area. And we have done a better job at opening the spaces. So I'm thankful that administrators and custodians are getting back to this new normal of reopening schools, which we kind of went away due to COVID closures. So I'm thankful that principals and custodians are, are doing that on a daily basis. I think that if people in the public don't have access Monday through Friday to facilities after school, they need to notify the principal so that they can work with that principal to make sure that those facilities are open. Because that's really how we'll get access. And if not, they can contact facilities and Mr. Freeze and we'll work with administration to do so. And I know some of our high schools are working now on opening spaces on the weekend and for the summer. So I'm thankful that staff is doing that as well. And just remind the public that it's going to take time for us to get used to that new normal and reminding staff, you know, custodians and principals to open those spaces. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. I just want to add very quickly, Mr. Freeze, thank you for the report. Thank you for working on it. Also, I want to kind of public service announcement to the public. When you go, when you use these spaces, keep in mind that it needs to remain safe. We need to be, value the spaces by keeping it clean. We need to value the spaces knowing that that next Monday, kids are going to be at that school. So it's just always having clear intentionality when we are co, the co-usage of these spaces because we don't want to put undue burden on our custodian on Monday. Now they have to go out and clean the field. We won't, we don't want to put an undue burden on our students that now they have to go and they're finding stuff that they should not see on our sites. So it's just because we are really intentionally moving to community schools, this is a moment to really co-govern and be responsible for our sites because it's our sites. So I just wanted to put that out there to the public. So thank you very much. I am complete. We are now moving on to the, seeing no other comments. We're moving on to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote, ma'am?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote, sir?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Once again, thank you, Mr. Freeze, for the hard work that you and your staff have done. We're now moving on to E-three, approval of the Board Governance Handbook. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, this is your item, sir.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Good afternoon, colleagues and public. If, if you all recall, we had a discussion about the draft of the handbook like a month and a half ago, two months, and it was sent back to the Governance Committee for review of specifically section in page thirty-eight and thirty-nine. So we're bringing it back now for approval after a really healthy discussion in governance. We made, we did make changes specifically on page thirty-nine to take in consideration some of the thoughts that were spoken about at our previous discussion. And I'm, I'm looking at specifically section D, which is the escalation to the Board Ethics Committee. I did want to point out two pieces, which is that first, the board president or designated officer would have to assess the validity of a complaint. And then it would follow the process as stated in C, D and E. But all, all the sections were reviewed again by Lozano Smith and by AALRR. So we had two separate legal firms look at that just to make sure that we were following best practice. And both law firms agreed that we are and that that would follow that process that they recommend to boards across the state. And again, we did change specifically section D to reflect a little bit more vagueness and allow for the Ethics Committee to make a couple other choices. That's it. I'll pass it on back to you, President Smith Folds, in case anyone has questions for us.
Thank you so very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Thank you for the hard work of the the Governance Committee. Any questions, Board? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, I asked first for a link to the Code of Conduct, which I don't see. But on page ten, I asked about all of this prohibition against private endowment procedures for managing conflicts of interest. And I asked, does this align with California law? Especially the FPPC? And if it doesn't, where does it differ? And so I don't feel that that was addressed in the opening statement by trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, President Smith Folds, my answer.
Absolutely, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Reckler. That's a really good question. So we did send it to legal counsel to review. They did not give us any feedback on any changes. So our assumption is that it is following current language. But we will, I will, I will make sure that I, that we follow up to just triple check, but like I mentioned, two different law firms reviewed it. So I feel pretty confident that it does.
Trustee Reckler, you have two more questions?
Thank you. So the next question has to do with gifts. Hold on a second. I just lost the page. So on page twelve, it says that board members should not accept any individual gifts directly or indirectly from staff, community members, contractors or suppliers. And again, I'd like to know specifically on this piece on page twelve, does it differ from the FPPC and California law in terms of the kinds of gifts that can be accepted? Because in the law, there are some provisions which I'm not sure align with this. Thank you.
President, thank you. Yes, it does differ. This section does differ, the specific one. The, the reason why it was changed, if I recall our conversation correctly, was that we believe this was the best practice for us. But you're right, under the law, we can accept up to a certain amount of money or worth, which has to be declared. So for us, this was the norm that we wanted to set. But to answer your specific question, yes, it does differ from what is stated.
Okay, and then finally, I have a question about student trustees. The law three-five-zero-one-two, which governs student trustees. Hold on a second. Let me find that. So I don't know if I've ever publicly spoken about this, but when I was on this committee, I did ask about this, you know, when we were meeting and
Excuse me for one second, Trustee Reckler. Can you tell me what page you're on? Excuse me for one second, trustee Reckler. Can you tell me what page you're on again? Twenty? Twenty-nine?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, so the board is supposed to adopt a resolution authorizing the pupil member or members to make motions that may be acted upon by the governing board, except on matters dealing with employer-employee relations pursuant to chapter ten point seven, commencing with section three, five, four, zero of Division Four of Title One of the Government Code. In these meetings, when I was on this committee, Lozano Smith said that they had nothing on file, that they had no recollection of a resolution being passed so that student trustees can make motions. I don't see that attached, so I'm guessing that we don't have that tonight? Question mark?
President Smith Folds, my answer. That is a really great question. No, it is not attached and we did not have our discussions. But the Governance Committee, we're actually discussing currently the student trustee policy. So it's a perfect time for us to talk about that on June third, which is our next meeting. So we will bring an update to that at the following board meeting because we're actually bringing a new policy on that. So definitely, this will come back.
Thank you very much, Board. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? I move the approval of the Board Governance Handbook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, do you have any comments? Trustee Reckler, wait for the clock, please, and then go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to explain why I'm going to be voting no. And that is, is that my main question about conflict of interest was not answered. And I'm concerned about the resolution coming back. And I'm also concerned about the district having a stricter gift policy than the FPPC. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think that there needs to be some messaging to new trustees. Really good messaging to new trustees that there is a higher standard here than the law. And, you know, I don't know. I think that needs to be managed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead. Trustee Phillips, wait for the clock for me, please. Pick the top, sir. Go ahead.
This is just a comment regarding what trustee Reckler just said about the district having a higher standard. I don't personally think that is a higher standard. I think it's an opinion. I think it's the majority of the board writing, "We don't think trustees should do X." But it doesn't say that trustees can't. And I don't know honestly that it could say trustees can't because the law says trustees can. So, you know, it is like at one point, we said trustees should contact the principal before going to a school. But you don't really have to, right? So I'm not saying or advocating for people taking gifts. I am just saying that there is a distinction, I see, in that language. I really read it like it's a recommendation to trustees. So if that makes anyone feel more comfortable.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I first just want to also echo what trustee Phillips said. I mean, our handbook is practically a set of recommendations, unless specifically calls out one of our policies or, you know, law. We, the handbook can't circumvent law, right? So we ultimately, law will be above anything else that we do. So I totally agree with that. And it is, I think, more of a statement, right? Of like, hopefully, we will follow this norm here because we believe it's better, right? So that's really what the handbook, a lot of it is. Because like trustee Phillips pointed out, a big one, right, which is in schools, we don't technically have to follow that, right? We have the right to go to any school anytime. But, you know, we have stricter procedure for that. So I also wanted to appreciate just the board for the work on this. I don't even know how long it's been until we finally are passing it tonight. We've had a lot of really healthy discussions. We had a really good discussion at the last board meeting where we're having this draft, which helped, I think, the Governance Committee to change some of the language and it's only going to make us better. So let's just continue discussions. I welcome that we continue to edit and change this document because it has to be a living document for future boards. And that it's not just something we put on the shelf. It is something that we should train new board members as part of their incoming, you know, work. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I do have a comment. I want to say thank you to Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy for heading this committee. It's, you did a great job. I love the fact that you are saying that it's a living document because I think it is. I think that it is a training document. I think it is a way for us to do our due diligence as a board to make sure that we are incoming, new, returning board members are all in alignment. And I think having this written kind of agreement will help us to hold each other accountable. So I will be voting yes tonight for the Governance Handbook. And again, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Okay, Board, we are now moving to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to agenda item F1, Early Learning Program Update. Ms. Neely Johnson, this is your item, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. President Smith Folds, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, trustees, Dr. Harrison, community. I'm very pleased to have Ms. Lonray Ajai, who is our early learning coordinator, to come and give you an early learning program update. And hopefully, you will be able to come and also see some of the items that she has on the table to just learn a little bit more about our early learning program. So, Mr. Ajai, further ado?
Thank you. Good evening, President Smith Folds, board members, superintendent, and everyone. My name is Lonray Ajai. I'm the coordinator of the preschool program for the district. I'm just going to give you an overview of the program. Our main goal is to ensure that all our students are safe and also they have fun while they are learning. That's the main goal of the program. The rationale for this is because we want to develop their skills, their readiness skills, and their foundational skills. And who are partners? Our key partner are the parents. We collaborate a lot with our parents. We develop trainings, workshops with our parents. They are our key partners. We also have other partners. We have Tandem. And Tandem, they provide literacy workshops and training for parents and for our staff. They also visit our classrooms and do interactive, read alouds twice weekly with the students, and this is free. They also give away books to children and to families. We also collaborate with Contra Costa County of Education and FOSTFIVE. They support our QRS program, which is the Quality Rating Improvement Scale Implementation. Our program overview. The focus is to give our students access to rich, integrated education. Our teachers are fully credentialed with multiple subjects and also ECE permits. They are highly trained. Actually, I'm proud to say that we are the only school district in the state that have teachers who have multiple subjects credentials. Our program is designed for three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and early five-year-olds. Our classrooms are environmentally, classroom environment are developmentally appropriate, safe, and nurturing. And I can proudly say that if you go to any of our classrooms, they look like private schools. We have everything that the kids need in the classroom. We provide our students with, actually, we develop their problem-solving skills, critical thinking skills, foundational skills, and promote lifelong learning. One of the best things that we do in preschool is to teach them social skills. They need those skills as adults, you know, to be able to get along with other people and also to get along with their peers. I can proudly say that we have high-quality tiers fours and five preschool programs in our district. And these are the highest tiers that the state gives to preschool programs. And we have eleven preschool programs currently. Our hours of operation is, we have two sessions, AM and PM session. AM session starts at eight fifteen to eleven fifteen, and the PM session is from twelve to three PM. Our preschool is free. The criteria for selection is given by the state. And the first first criteria is they have to be homeless, they have to be foster kids. That's the first. Then we also have waiting lists. Currently, we have four hundred and thirty-five students enrolled in our preschool program. English learners, two ninety-eight. Students with IEP twenty-two. Female, two hundred and thirty-nine, and male, one ninety-six. Latino kids, two hundred and eighty-four. Asian, seventy-seven. Black, African-American, fifty-four. Caucasian, twenty, and homeless, three. The program highlights, we have so many highlights, so I won't be able to talk on all of them, but I'm just going to give you a few of them. We do have screening tools for our students when they are coming in. It's called ages and stages. Questionnaire. We have parents fill out the questionnaire so that we can have early detection and intervention for our students. We have planning time for our teachers. Instead of the hundred minutes, we give them three hours weekly to plan. But on top of that, we have a lesson plan book for all our teachers and our aides. This was developed by our teachers during summer. They were paid to do it. I have example over there. And the rationale for that is that kids are exposed to the same content across board. So that if you go to a school in Richmond, you go to school in Esserito, you are exposed to the same curriculum. And also, when we do have subs, we don't have to look for lesson plans. Also, our new teachers, you know, it's easy for them to just, you know, integrate into the system. So that was the rationale behind that. We also have one-on-one academic conference with our teachers where we analyze data and also develop strategies. So I bring them into the office, then we look at the data and we develop strategies. Another highlight, teachers have the opportunity to visit other classrooms for the whole day, entire day. They don't have to teach. They just have to observe others. The rationale behind that is you can learn from anybody. No matter how good you are, there are other people who are better than you, so you can learn. And our teachers really like that. We tried it this year, and they want more of that. And luckily, we're able to do that. We also have time for teachers to collaborate on their own. All they have to do is give me their agenda and their signing sheets so that they can, you know, share strategies and different activities that they're doing in their classrooms. Another one that I'm going to highlight is the Family Fun Day. That is the, sorry, that's the best because our parents really like that. We have the whole community. Grandparents, siblings, we have different activities, and we have the police, the police department, the firefighters, they come to play with the children and provide activities for the children. It's usually really good. Yeah, parents like that. Next slide, please. Our daily routine, as you can see from the pictures, when the kids arrive in the classroom, they have to wash their hands. And that was why during COVID, they were already, they were already trained, so they knew how to wash their hands. Then they go into their writing space. We have, next slide, please. Other activities during the day. Preschool is not a babysitting enterprise. It's a program where kids develop different types of skills. As you can see from here, we have reading time, when teachers read and ask questions. We have free choice time. And free choice time, that's the time when kids develop the opportunity to explore right of interest areas while playing with their peers and staff are able to interact with them. So we have dramatic play area. We have science areas. We have block area. We have math area. We have library. And you have art area. And that's why when you go into a preschool classroom, you don't want to leave because there are different areas. And kids spend one hour doing that every day. We also have small groups where we do intervention with the kids. Of course, we have lunchtime. You can see the kids smiling. We provide children with free lunches. And outdoor play area, where the kids have different things to play with, slides, water play, sand play. As, next slide, please. For the curriculum, we have, our core curriculum is developed by the state. It's called the California Preschool Learning Foundations. We have examples over there. We also use MyMath for preschool and teacher-created materials. We also have supplementary curriculum, environment, narrating skill, and second step. And second step is for the social skills. We are big on social skills. Assessment, we do assess our kids. So the assessment that we use is called desired result developmental profile. It's an observational assessment to determine if students are emotionally competent, if they are effective learners, if they are safe, if they are healthy. So maybe I'll have an opportunity to present one of our data one of these days, so you can see the continuum. And it usually register, administer twice a year, once in the fall and also in spring. And we also have mandated professional development, twenty-five hours a year that we enter into workforce registry. Everybody that works with preschool had to do that. Thank you very much for listening. If you have questions.
Thank you so very much. We're going to take a break and look at your, your table. And then we'll come back for public comment and questions. So, community, we're going to be gone for about five minutes just to look at the display from our preschool, and then we will be back to take public comment if you have any and to do board questions. Board, if we would like to go over to the side of the room to look at the materials. Staff, could you put a five-minute timer up for me? Thank you so much, community. We're back. Thank you again for the presentation. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Misha Harris-Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to the preschool staff. Um those who know me know I am good for saying one of the best days of my life and in my daughter's life was the day I sent her to daycare, at least two days a week, because she needed to be with her people. Um I remember lovingly her preschool teacher, Ms. Carol, who also was her kindergarten teacher. And it's definitely um a ministry for uh my colleagues who work within the preschool program. So I just wanted to say I value you, I appreciate you, um because working with young people, I I just cannot imagine. So I just wanted to affirm my colleagues and hopefully next school year, I don't know how it could work. I don't know, maybe I take a professional development day. I would love to come to either King, which is across the street from Kennedy, to see their program, or to Lincoln, which I'm an alum of Lincoln, um to see their program, because I am a lifelong learner and just for me to even grow and develop in uh our young people. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, we're moving to questions. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions. Board, are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead. Wait for the clock for me, please, sir, and then go ahead.
Mrs. Ajayi, I do not have any flowers to give you, and I should have brought some. You are a blessing to this district. You are a jewel, and you have done great work on behalf of the children of West County, and you have done it year after year. You have done it, uh and and I'm gonna go back to these flowers that I was talking about. You have done it not looking for adoration. You've done it not looking for attaboys. You have just quietly worked in your department, and you have done a hell of a job. And, you know, some of the things that you're talking about today, like the lesson planning uh across sites, um even though you are working with the littlest of our students. Um I do think that uh the caller-in was correct. Um I think a lot of people would benefit from going to the preschools and seeing what you do. Uh because I think what you do can and should be replicated uh, you know, across the district. I almost feel bad that you're here uh because you've been able to kind of operate quietly and and do what you do. And now there's this spotlight on you, which you you deserve because you are an outstanding individual. Uh but I hope that this spotlight that is being shined on you right now actually leads to uh better recognition for the preschool program, but also observation by others who are willing to learn from you, because people can learn from you. You are great. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Trustee Christian, and we'll work all the way around. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, uh thank you uh for the presentation of the layout of all that's taking place in our preschools, and this is great and this is wonderful. Uh keep up the good work, and um this is this is awesome. Um and the lesson plan uh for anybody to be able to pick that uh substitute or teacher and go through that lesson plan and um but this is great. And so uh thank you for all those who work diligently and hard in uh putting all of this together. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Kirk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President. Uh, Mr. Ajayi, I also wanted to just thank you. I mean, my colleagues have said it really well. Uh but I've known you now for quite a few years, and I've always appreciated the way that you uh lead the work. Um and I think that it shows not just in the work that we're seeing tonight, but also as, you know, your son is Teacher of the Year, right, which is also pretty amazing, and just shows also who you are as a person um with your family. So uh I'm incredibly appreciative for you. I agree with my colleagues. I think that we can be a great example to the state on what a good program could look like. Um and we've also seen it in the academics. I mean, it's really weird to look at academics at that level, but we see actually how much growth students make in our preschool program, which is pretty amazing. Um so I think that we just gotta ensure that that work that happened in preschool continues to stay strong over the following years, right? Um and I appreciate everything uh that you're doing for our district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
And again, I just want to say thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. It is an absolute pleasure seeing everything that you do and the passion that you do it with and the intentionality that you do it with. It's a pleasure walking into your son's classroom, because I know he learned it from you. And it's amazing to see his preschoolers and just how happy they are. I think one of the things that I enjoyed most about your presentation was the goal of happily learning. And I think that that is something that as a district, we need to pick up that intentionality of happily learning, and um it was just wonderful. It was a wonderful presentation. You do an amazing job, and as you heard from the entire board, we just want to say thank you, and we see you and we value you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, board, we are now moving on to F2, FICMAT review. Dr. Moses, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you, President Smith-Folds. Board, um this evening, we have Marcus Warwick with us from the FICMAT Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team. Uh in March of two thousand and twenty-four, the West Contra Costa Unified School District and the FICMAT team engaged in a fiscal health risk analysis as requested by Contra Costa County Office of Education due to concerns in risk um of risk of fiscal insolvency. Um this presentation that you'll hear tonight is uh being was prepared by the FICMAT team, and the report will include the study, uh this the team's findings, recommendations based upon the tool, uh the FHRA, Fiscal Health Risk Analysis Tool, which is uh designed to help evaluate the local education agencies' fiscal health and risk of insolventcy in the current and subsequent fiscal years. It is my pleasure to introduce Marcus to present uh his findings to the board. Marcus?
Thank you. Thank you, Board President, Board members, community, and staff. I appreciate it. Uh again, my name is Marcus Warwick. I am with FICMAT Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team. I think as of tonight, too, I am the resident photographer. So if I ever come back, you will see that on my title specifically to this district. So um tonight, I'll be going over uh as Dr. Moses indicated or stated, our fiscal health risk analysis. Um this was a triggered event by the county Contra Costa uh County Office of Education. Typically, when there's events, and I'll go over this, when there a trigger occurs, FICMAT will come in free of charge to do a self uh uh not as an assessment of the district's processes and procedures. Um they are they are indicators. Now I'll review this a little bit further later on as to uh areas where FICMAT has seen districts that have been close to fiscal insolvency or have faced insolvency, common areas. And so that's where we came up with with this tool. It is a tool. So uh um I also want to note that they are not absolute. Uh it's a risk. It's not, it doesn't indicate that there is a fiscal insolvency tomorrow or anything of that sort. It is a is a tool. It's an assessment. It's a snapshot as to where the district is at at that moment in time. So a little bit about FICMAT. We started in nineteen ninety-two under Assembly Bill twelve hundred. At that time, we were to provide fiscal accountability uh for districts. Since then, that has expanded to uh community colleges as well as charter public charter schools. Um additional services can be management assistance, fraud investigations, professional development for for uh districts and County Office of Education. We are an external agency uh that receive an allocation uh through the state budget. Um Kern County Superintendent of Schools is our administrative agent. I don't reside in Kern County. In fact, all of us staff reside all throughout the state. Uh but they are our fiscal, our administrative agent, if you will. Uh next slide, please. So as stated, our scope of work was the, we call it the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, or what you might might hear me refer to as the FHRA. Uh this tool has twenty different sections that we go over in terms of the district's operations, uh which again are common indicators where FICMAT has seen districts run into potential insolvency or uh a crisis, if you will. Next slide, please. This this report and our assessment was based off of the district's twenty-three twenty-four first interim budget report and then going backwards. So it's a snapshot in time at the point we were there doing fieldwork. Uh the I I am sure after some of the conversations that I've had with the district that there have already been some improvements. But again, I have to remind you that this is a snapshot from what we saw at first interim at the beginning of this fiscal year and in the previous two years. The district, uh the the team visited the district on March sixth through eighth. Uh we primarily interviewed business services staff, but um with with within the tool, you will see that there are other areas that we've interviewed as well, such as special education, human resources, facilities, uh information systems and so on, to give you to give us a general idea as to what the district uh what kind of condition the district is looking at. Um it's a lot of work. Uh in fact, I I pulled the SharePoint server as to what all the documents were uploaded from the district. One thousand forty-five documents were uploaded to our server uh as we were going over this this review. It's a lot of work. In addition to that, during the course of our interviews, we also requested additional documentation from Dr. Moses's staff, uh and they were able to provide that to us quite quickly. This report focuses on process and procedures. It's 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 an evidence-based, so if if we see that something is occurring and that that's in alignment with what the tool is, it's a yes. And then we don't respond to the yeses because that that's a good thing. That's occurring. If it's a no, we indicate what we saw and and some information as to why it was a no. Again, I want to talk about, I want to mention, you know, and you're gonna hear me say this a couple of times. This is a triggered FHRA, right? And so essentially, we're kind of, we show up, hey, we're from the government. We're here to help, right? Um and so so this is a tool and assessment that we will work with the district. It's 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 an assist. It's to provide you, like I said, a snapshot of your overall operational health. Um next, next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. Okay, so I talked a little bit about what what is a triggering event. So the County Office of Education has oversight of school districts uh budget. And so there are certain instances where a triggered event could occur. Those instances could be a negative interim budget certification, three consecutive qualified interim report certifications, a downgrade of an interim certification that's done by the county county superintendent, or a lack-of-going concern designation by the county superintendent. In this case, it was a lack-of-going concern that was the triggering event. After reviewing the the budget and the interim reports, it was your third consecutive, so that that's the other area where where it was uh triggered, if you will. On the score, you will see a higher risk, moderate risk, and low risk. On all triggered FHRA's, it's designated as an automatic high risk. It is what it is, right? But I want you to pay attention to the actual score as we go on, because I think the score also tells a good story as well. But I want you to pay attention to the actual score as we go on because I think the score also tells a good story as well. And the reason why I say that is FICMAT was here in 2021 to conduct a fiscal health risk analysis. And from what we saw from 2021 to now, there tells a story of the score, the decrease in terms of the risk. So although it was triggered and it's considered a designated as a higher risk, there is some silver linings to, to this report. I don't want to bring doom and gloom to you. Again, I want to repeat that these aren't absolute. So there are just indicators. It's a risk assessment. It's if you decide to speed down the freeway, you run the risk of getting a ticket and so on and so forth, right? Similar to, to some of these things in here as well. The questions are are weighted. So some questions will have more weight as to how that applies to the score. Because we feel that, that within FICMAT that there is more importance to those and there should be more weight to that, to that specific score. There's 132 questions within the 20 sections broken up. And again, they're, they're yes, no's and going back to, it's either yes, you're doing it and evidence has been provided to us being FICMAT that a certain process or procedure was being done or it wasn't and, and what we found or, or what we heard from staff. Uh, may I please have the next slide? So this is our, this is the FICMAT's opinion based off of this. I will say there was some consistency in our team that, that performed this review. The same person, one of the same team members that was on the 2021 review was also a part of this team as well. And so there's some consistency in terms of, you know, we have, we have same lenses, if you will, on taking a look at the systems and processes that are in place. Like I said, we're taking a look at the first interim reporting period going backwards. So we're already late a little bit. Third interim was just reported tonight. Things have changed and things should have changed appropriately. Again, you're gonna hear me say it was triggered because it's triggered it to higher risk. But with that said, your overall score was a 27%. You are 2.01 percentage points away from technically being a low risk. So now, if I go back to the 2021 report, you were at 37. I think I have that listed at the very end. You're at 37.4%. So from 2021, 37.4% to now 2024, you're at 27%. So your risk went down. Although it's designated as a high risk, there's still some concern with that, right? Your overall risk went down according to the score. Does that make sense? Next slide, please. So on page 10 of the report, it talks about the breakdown of each of the sections. And so what I did here, I didn't want to summarize and go over each, each section within the report. But I kind of wanted to highlight maybe six sections that I felt were hot for two reasons, that I, that were a higher contributor to the score, the overall score. And within some of these sections, there's some minor tweaks that could be done that I think, that I believe could be turned those no's to a yeses, if you will. So next slide, please. So first off, it's collective bargaining agreements. The first one, have you settled with all your bargaining units, right? Some you can control, some you can't. You're still working with your labor partners. We understand that. At that point in time, I don't know where you are in terms of the collective bargaining process, but at that time, all contracts were open or you're bargaining with all of your, your labor partners. It is what it is, right? You have, in previous agreements, the COLA or Cost of Living Adjustment, what the district provided was more than what the Cost of Living Adjustment was, right? And that is fine, but again, it is, there is an inherent risk with that, right? And so that's why it's called out. There's two things that I want to point out that could be easy no's to yeses. And again, maybe I recall, I'm going back two years, right? And so there's been some transition in the, in the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services position. So some of this could be, there's a reason why, right? Did, did the superintendent and the CBO or the, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services sign off on the public disclosure forms after the district reached a tentative agreement with the associations? So what we're looking for is when there's that public disclosure form as how it impacts the multi-year projection, have both the superintendent as well as the CBO signed off on that. If it hadn't, there was, that's the no, right? So moving forward, this is an easy, uh, easy yes, if you will. When you see those forms and in the superintendent and, and the, the CBO are now have that signature on it before they go to you for approval, you know that that particular question will now be a yes. Does that make sense? Again, yeses are, yeses are a good thing for the district. Next question, please. Or sorry, uh, next slide. Contributions and transfers. So this is somewhat of a two-part section and I'll get into this next on another section. So the question was, and I kind of broke these down in terms of what's happening and what we saw as to how I'm presenting this. But is there a border plan, is there a border proof plan to emanate reduced control contributions? Uh, or transfers from unrestricted to other restricted programs and, and funds? At the time that we were here, there was a plan to reduce, but did it necessarily address your restricted funds? And if it was passed, I know that there was two board meetings. There was a board meeting on March 6th, which was one of the days that we were here. We don't verify until we see bargaining or to, uh, um, a, a board meeting minutes. So we do know from staff that there were some changes and in terms of some resolutions passed. But again, we're looking at that snapshot in time as to what occurred. The, the next one were contributions to restricted programs where they budgeted as a reasonable level. And what we saw were, were swings in the first interim report, second interim report, and then the actuals as to what was budgeted appropriately and so on. There could be numerous reasons for that in terms of previous vacancies within the position and so on and so forth. But again, we're looking at that, the, the current first interim report going back two years. Next slide. So we talked about deficit spending, just based off of what we saw tonight from the third interim, uh, uh, report. The district continues to deficit spend in the current year as well as the previous use, previous two years. This was evident on the first interim reporting period. Is there a board approved plan, board approved and implemented plan to address or eliminate deficit spending and ensure fiscal solvency? So we do know that there, that a plan was passed late, uh, I think December, January timeframe based off of the County Office of Education letters to, to the district. We do know that there were reductions on February 7th and March 6th. But we just, we saw the board agenda items, but we have to go off of what, what, what the meeting board minutes, board meeting minutes to, to determine what happened and what was approved. We just didn't have that information at that time. So again, this is a two-part question on this one. Is there a border proof plan? Is there a border proof plan? And is it being implemented, right? So we saw the, it's like, you know, two-part and we can't say, well, yes, no, right? There was a border proof plan, so there's yes, but we couldn't confirm that that plan is being implemented, if, if, if that makes sense. Next slide. This, these are tricky times. The last couple of years have been tricky years in terms of one-time funding. In fact, districts all throughout the state of California have been flushed with one-time funding. And in fact, have been encouraged to spend the one-time funding on, on staff to, to support what was, what occurred during COVID. The problem is what happens with these one-time funds when they exhaust and those one-time funds are tied to personnel? And so we need, what ideally needs to occur in situations like that is a plan. Do you expect to fund those positions that are tied to one-time funding? Do you expect to eliminate them? If you expect to fund them out of the general fund, what are the areas are you going to reduce or is there excess money available or something of that sort? So when we say, you know, is there using one-time funds, that, that's not necessarily bad. But then is there a plan in place to ensure that when those one-time funds exhaust, there's a plan in place to figure out what you're gonna do with those programs, the, the staff associated with that and so on. We do understand that in some programs, especially within special ed, there's not nearly enough funding for special ed and so on and so forth. But there are other areas too where we found were restricted funds. Restricted expenses exceeded restricted funds. There were a couple of occasions where we found where money wasn't spent within the statutory timeline. So then therefore had to be sent back to the California Department of Education. That's not necessarily a good thing. And then you're charging your indirect costs and why this, why charging indirect costs? So this is essentially when you do receive a grant award or, or when you're running programs, are you charging the appropriate overhead associated with that specific fund to capture your true cost as an organization? That's really what we're looking for in, in terms of, of your indirect costs. Next slide, please. So internal controls and fraud prevention, district access, and during the course of interviews, this is where I believe that another yes could, or another no could easily be turned to a yes. When talking to staff, uh, they told us that on a monthly basis, they review access to the district's systems. And, and that's, that's, you know, people that should have access have access, people that shouldn't have access don't have access. But there just wasn't evidence provided to us that demonstrates that that's occurring, right? And, and this, this is, this is easy, this is something easy that we, we believe is easy to, to fix. The beginning balances were posted and reconciled, but they were different for each funds and there were still being adjustments after actuals. And then on the process to discourage and tech fraud, I, this is a great one because most of your ID badges that we saw at district staff on the back of the ID badge had a fraud statement, right? Fraud prevention and so on. And so we had several staff that would say, oh yeah, here's our ID badge. In fact, you asked us about this last time when you were here, right? Because we did interview some of the same staff. There were a couple of staffs that, that her ID badge was on her, on, on the table that we were talking to and it was flipped up where we could see the fraud policy. And then we asked our question, hey, what do you do if there's fraud? Oh, I don't really know. Or like, really? Like, look, look down, you know? But again, something like simple as that, you know, a simple email, a reminder. Hey, staff, just so you know, for those that have the ID badges and the statements on the back of the ID badge, this is what you do in case that there, if you believe that there's fraud or misappropriation of funds. Again, an easy no to a yes. Next slide, please. So lastly, you have the leadership and stability. Stability in the CBO role as well as in a superintendent role are pivotal. If you recall in the 2021, there was some transition within the district. Since then, there still has been some transition. Again, it's just, it's, it's a risk that when there's not stability in those two roles, roles within the organization, there, there, um, there could be a greater risk. Policies, we have, again, this is another two-part question. Policies are adopted and revised. We did see evidence that the board is adopting and revising policies. Then we asked staff, hey, what happens when there's a new policy? What, how do you know? And, and we couldn't get a solid answer from staff as to, well, hey, that's shared the next, that's, you know, the, the district's message on a weekly basis. Or, um, hey, staff, last night the board approved X policy. Why is this important? Well, if you're updating policies to ensure that best practices in accordance with the law, in accordance with your direction as a board, but if you're not sharing that with staff, how are they know to operate differently? Whether a change in law or a change in direction from the board. And so that's why it's important that once they're revised and adopted or adopted and, or revised and adopted, they are then shared with staff across the organization. Lastly, board training on, on budget and governance. I do want to mention that two board, uh, we were told two board members has, has attended the Masters of Governance. We think that's great. Um, we hope to bump those numbers up a little bit. That I think the question is specific, you know, within the last two years, has the board received training on, on, on so on? So kudos to the board members that have, uh, but we would encourage you to continue to receive training on, on that. So before I get into questions, next slide, please. I just want to go over the comparison as to the 2021 year and now. Now, all I did was, was all the team did is in this particular section, we wanted to calculate, did the no's increase? Did they, did, you know, the no's, no was a bad thing or have they remained the same? And so in some of these areas, in annual independent audit report, there was no change. So there's the same amount of no's that there was in 2021 as there was, as there is in the current 2024 reports. Budget development, an increase of a no by one. There were no changes in budget monitoring, cash management, charter schools, contribution and transfers, an increase by one no for deficit spending. Uh, next slide, please. No change in employee benefits, general fund, an increase of one internal controls and, uh, and fraud prevention. Leadership and stability, no change. Position control increased by one and special education, no change. This sounds doom and gloom, but if I can go to the next slide, please. And there's, there's a, uh, next slide, please. If you look at the score, 37.4% was your risk in 2021, 27% is your risk. There's an error on this. It should be moderate. I was somewhat calculating some of the easy no's that could be yeses. And I believe that it could actually, you would actually fall under that, the higher end of that low risk, but who cares? It's considered low risk, right? Nobody cares that cholesterol is one point over. It's, it's sufficient. It's standard, right? So I, I wanted to point out that this is just based on the score alone, right? If it's a triggering event, again, you've heard me repeat this, that this was a triggering event. It would be designated as an automatic, uh, high risk. But if we remove that and it's just based off of the score alone, you are on the lower end of a moderate risk. Some minor changes that you could even probably implement tomorrow could probably bump you down into that low risk area. Next slide. So following up and, and we'll get some, I, I typically, as an agency, we'll get questions, well, what happens next for us? The County Office of Education has received this report. They may provide additional oversight in some of the sections and work with the district. That's part of their responsibility in their oversight process. Excuse me. We, we do get asked, well, should we do this self-assessment on a yearly basis? That's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. Again, there were over a thousand documents that we had, we requested to upload plus the additional documents that, that we, that we asked during the course of our interviews. What I would recommend is some of the sections that you were the higher risk that we reviewed today, maybe have on an annual basis, review that and, and a report out to see, hey, how could we move those no's to a yes? Are there easy ones? In fact, in some of our responses, you could say, you see that the district didn't provide evidence. If there was evidence, that no would be a yes. And so on an annual basis, I would do a self-assessment on some of those sections that, that you feel are concerning to the district or that you direct, um, to see how you could improve overall. Shoot, in fact, some, there is a tool for, uh, on the charter schools, how there was no change. We even have an FHRA specific to charter schools, right? We saw some evidence of the district providing oversight for the charter schools. The tool could be another great opportunity for you guys to, for the district to use, uh, for the charter school to, to fulfill your oversight responsibility or portion of your oversight responsibilities. And, and so, um, again, we hope that this helps. We hope that this is an assessment. We hope that if there's ever another full FHRA, that that trend continues down. And, and, um, you know, again, I hope that there's some silver, there's a lot of bad news in here, but I want to make sure that, that I come, come away. There has been progress made from the 2021 report until now. Unfortunately though, we have the deficit model as to, we have to report as to what's, you know, we don't report as to what everybody's doing great and so on. So with that said, are there any questions that I might be able to ask, answer for you?
Thank you so much for your presentation. First, we're gonna go to public comments. Staff, are there any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment. Cake Burkhardt, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm happy to see that they, that this is an improvement and that the district is moving in the right direction. I hope that continues. We do not need to have another bankruptcy. And I was also pleased to hear that it was free. It's, if it's developed and paid for by the state, that's good or the federal or somebody. But it's nice to know that this isn't more consultant fees that have to be developed. But good luck to the district and keep working on the right, right direction. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead with your three.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. The first question is, so now as a board, for the things that we can control, can you give me a hit list in terms of would it be policy, would it be training, would it be? Would it be like you're a board member, you're looking at this, what are, what are you going to tackle first?
It's a great question. As, so, so yes to the first, is it policy, is it training and so on? I think, I think, uh, all of those things are, are great areas, uh, uh, to improve. I would also encourage, uh, the district to work with their county office of education to say, hey, if you were to tell us the top five things based off of the report and what we're seeing on your budget reports, what would be those things that we could address appropriately? Uh, within the district. And so again, they're to provide that support for you. They're the ones that triggered the FHA for us to come in and provide this service. Um, and so I, I would, you know, like I said, they have this report as well, they contributed to some of the information. They, they should be a partner with you. And so I would reach out to the county office of education and say, hey, what are some areas? If you were to tell us the top five things based off of what you're seeing within our budget reports, where do you think we should improve?
Okay, thank you. Then, um, I'm really stingy, I hate to give money back. So returning money to the state from federal sources that were not spent or rotated properly or FIFO'd or FIFO'd or whatever you want to call it. Um, can you give me any more on that? And what a board should be looking for in terms of procedure, um, on that particular finding?
You know, that, that's another great question and we had a lengthy dis- discussion regarding that or staff meeting. So a lot of times within large organizations such as this, sometimes staff have these great, there's grants available and they're, they're great opportunities, but there's either matching funds or the business office may not be aware of it, that they've applied for it and so on and so forth. So I would encourage a process, uh, uh, I, I believe that there is a policy, but then an internal process, a form to be filled out that, that when there is grants, districts can take a look at that and make that determination. Do we want to apply for this? Is it worth it? Cause sometimes, you know, a, a million dollar grant might be great, but then if you have to match million dollars in funds, might not be that great. I do know a form was shared as a sample that when there are grants available, that it routes through the appropriate staff. I could share that with Dr. Moses as, as although there's a policy now that there's an internal form and there's a process when there are grants, so you don't run into situations like this. Or you say, thanks, but no thanks to the grant.
Okay, so in other words, an administrative reg- regulation, if you will. Then, um, when you talked about the AB 12 hundreds, so I want to make clear that when those, when those uh, are listed in the board packet, they have to come pre-signed. So I should open up my packet, I should see that AB 1200 form and I should see the chief business officer's signature and the superintendent's signature prior to the board actioning the item, is that correct?
Correct, that's accordance with government code. Now, if the position is vacant, that's when you run into the issue as to who is going to be the, the, uh, interim uh, individual who signs off on those. And so that would be a conversation with the superintendent. Um, again, I'm going back previously, there's probably reasons why, because you just, maybe you didn't have that position, that position was vacant. And so that might be a conversation as to who's the de facto individual to make sure you fulfill that provision of the law.
Okay, thank you. Uh, should there be the opportunity for more questions? I would take that up, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other three questions from board members? Okay, um, thank you so very much for your presentation, thank you for your questions. Board, do we have comments? Clark Gonzalez or trustee Reckler, you have a comment?
I do, I, I will, I would wish you would explain, uh, the salaries below fifty five percent. I don't know if we can allow him to do that. Um, it, you know, you guys dinked us for the, the salary calculation. And our auditor said, you know, a lot of people are doing it just because there's so much federal money coming in that lots dismiss that. So I was just wondering if I could get a, if, if you'd allow him to, uh, make a comment on the, on that. And then I'm going to follow up with you individually, because I have some other questions that I'd like to ask and the time does not permit. And I just wanted you to know that I am masters in governance trained, but I also go to the FICMAT training every year. I'm already booked for July. Um, and it just refreshes my memory of what you guys look for. And I, I, the one I particularly like is the county board, because that lets, you know, that's like, it's kind of like me, but bigger. And so, um, that's the one I like the best, but I take it every year to stay, uh, fresh and sharpen my skills, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fitmat Man, if you will give that answer to Dr. Moses and then she'll bring it back to the whole board, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, could, could I, could you say what, so what question are you asking on the, the FHA?
I really just wanted your opinion on this calculation that we fell under for the amount of salaries that, uh, district is supposed to, um, uh, spend on salaries and we have fallen below that, um, for a couple of years. And so fifty five percent of expenses be allocated towards classroom teacher salaries and we haven't hit that. Our auditor said that, you know, it's very common just due to the amount of monies that districts are, you know, came into. And I just wanted to hear your point of view on it, that's all.
I, I think that would be outside of the scope of our engagement as to what we, what we did within the organization, what we did, what we provided here. And I don't think it'd be appropriate at the time. You know, again, and I'm not prepared to specifically address that question, because that was not within, uh, our, our report.
Thank you, Mr. Fitmat Man. Dr. Moses, you were already going to address that, because you addressed it in the one-on-ones, correct? Okay, thank you. Board, any other comments? Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez.
I'll be brief, I just, um, thank you for the report. I want to thank our business services, Dr. Moses, your department for the progress that we have made. I agree that I think that if we were to take the, the metrics today, it would look also very much different, because there we have made quite a bit of progress, including that we are implementing the plan that we said that we were going to, to implement, right? Which is to me, I think the biggest issue. So, so I appreciate it, it looks like we're heading in the right direction. Eventually, I would love for us to talk about whether or not we want to continue to do some of those reports in the future. Uh, I think that until we have the full trust of the public, uh, it might be beneficial to continue to do them in some metric. And, and until we have, you know, a balanced budget, um, but we can have that discussion at, at another time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Dr. Moses, thank you to your department for all the hard work that you have done. Thank you for, uh, Dr. Hurst, your entire team for helping us trend down. And I think that if we, um, if I heard correctly what, sorry, I'm calling you Fitmat Man, I forgot your name. What's your name, friend? Mark?
All right, Marcus.
Marcus, thank you, Mr. Marcus. Um, if we do those easy lists, Dr. Moses, that Mr. Marcus was talking about, the easy ones that turn to a yes, I think it will show us that we will continue to trend down. So I think that that's, um, good information that we got tonight. Thank you so very much, I really appreciate it. Board, we are now moving to the poll consent item. And that was consent item C3. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this item, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thought that FICMAT would give us some more information on that, but they feel it's out of their zone. So with that, and if nobody has any other questions, then I'll move, the application for exemption for the required expenditure for classroom teacher salary is twenty-two to twenty-three.
All right, any questions?
Second.
All right, that's a second, good. Any comments? Nope, to the vote. Uh, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Board, we are now moving to G, comments from the board of education and future agenda items. We'll put two minutes on the clock. Anyone have comments? All right, Clark Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, President Smith Fols, first of all, thank you for another great meeting. Um, I want to just say, we have one week left of school, or a week and a half. Uh, I know that a lot of people are counting down, um, cannot come fast enough. I think everybody definitely needs a little bit of break, uh, including everybody in this room. Um, I, I'm just incredibly thankful for everyone. And it was actually a really nice start when Mr. Galindo came, um, because it just reminded me of the generosity of spirit our staff has uh, for being here. Because let's be honest, anybody in this room, anybody in any of our schools could go fifteen minutes away, make more money and probably have less problems. Um, so you are making a commitment to being here, uh, because our students are great, our schools are great, our diversity makes us great. Um, and I'm just so thankful for everybody, uh, who shows up to our schools and continues to make that commitment. Um, which, you know, can be a struggle, so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to our cabinet for continuing to be here and your commitment, thank you, Dr. Hurst. Um, and as we head into summer, uh, I want to thank our school staff, our principals, our teachers, our classified staff. And then, you know, also our families for continuing to choose to come to our schools. We hear of a lot of issues, but there are more positives that our schools have, that we have to continue to hear, like our presentation tonight for preschool. Um, so I just wanted to end tonight with a big thanks. Um, and, and I hope that everybody has a great summer break. Um, and happy graduations in the next two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Christian, you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to say, uh, echo the same words. Uh, this has been, uh, a challenging, you know, school year and we about to close out. Um, I wanted to say, you know, thank you to, um, our cabinet, uh, Dr. Hurst's cabinet and all those who worked diligently hard throughout the, uh, school year to make things happen, uh, for us at the board meetings. And, um, you know, this year went by quick and it's like, wow, we here to the, I mean, close, I mean, this a week or so left, you know, for school, so, um, I just want to appreciate our teachers, principals, classified staff and all those who have been working hard on their school sites and have, um, diligently, you know, day in and day out. Dealt with many, uh, challenges, but here we are, close to the end and graduation, which is a sighting moment, to see all of our seniors, uh, crossover. And then also, um, John Gary Mindy, our congressman, John Gary Mindy, uh, is sending, uh, certificates to all of our, uh, graduates in, in this district. And so I want to thank the office, Congressman John, uh, Gary Mindy, and we appreciate that. And I just want to say, everybody in this room, man, here we are, closing out. But I appreciate each and every one of you and, uh, have a great summer.
Thank you very much. Any other board member? Okay, this is our last board meeting, uh, before the end of the school year. So our next board meeting will be June 12th. So thank you to all the graduates, thank you to all the teachers, thank you to Dr. Hurst, you and your staff. Thank you, you, uh, board of trustees. Also, the, my small PSA that you may hear all the time, public service announcement. Please do not give your teachers flowers, please do not give your teachers mugs, they have enough, they need gift cards. So your teaching staff, your administrating, your administrators, your staff on campus, your aides, your, the traffic, uh, your traffic volunteers, your, um, your lunch staff, please, gift cards, a little goes a long way, five dollar gift cards go a very long way, because they add up. Um, everyone appreciates working with your children, but flowers die and people have enough mugs. Um, I am complete. So the next board meeting will be held on June 12th at Levania Dejean Middle School. And we, oh, I want to wait one minute because I have a little bit of OCD, wait till exactly nine o'clock. So we'll just wait it out for half a second, because that would make me feel good, sir. So we are going to wait and we can just look at each other until it turns nine o'clock. Oh, there's a gavel, we're, we're adjourned.